Present. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time, place, agenda, et cetera, The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Would everybody please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Mustarel, do we have a resolution for executive session?
We do. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Vineland School District will convene an executive session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is about anticipated litigation and any matters fallen within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise her ethical duties as a lawyer.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Godisbadi?
Yes.
The record will show Mr. Bono, 502.
Present.
Do we have any special presentations?
Yes, we have two special presentations this evening. First, we will have Dr. Sandra Struthers, Executive Director for Jobs for America's Graduates, New Jersey, to present the JAG program for the 24 school year.
Good evening. To the Chair and Superintendent Yano, staff, students, and the Vineland community, thank you for allowing us to share information about Jobs for America's graduates and our JAG leaders. I'm Sandra Struthers. I am the Executive Director for JAG New Jersey, a part of the New Jersey Chamber of Commerce Foundation led by Donna Custard, who is our president. It's always an honor to present JAG to stakeholders and share updates on our incredible work, and tonight I'm excited to present a brief summary of the program, followed by long-awaited public presentations to Mr. Bob Rush. Vineland joined the JAG network in 2016 and has supported several, as a matter of fact, hundreds of youth since that time. The demographics presented here on the next slide show participants from the past year. I call your attention to selection, criteria, and average barriers per student. Barriers represent challenges that some of our participants experience that may impact their ability to graduate and secure post-secondary or employment opportunities after graduation. Even with these challenges, our JAG New Jersey leaders fare well in the program. The next slide is a summary of post-secondary education opportunities secured by JAG leaders since 2023. For many of our participants, this is the first time that they secure a job. The power in JAG is that they are prepared for their first job and will be able to sustain it over time. Also, we are fortunate to have employment partners who are now employing several of our JAG students. The goal is twofold. The specialist secures partnerships with prospective employers and facilitates the employment process with the students. The national network is now moving toward credentialing our participants so they are prepared and competitive in career-track jobs. We are equally pleased in the increase in Vineland JAG students seeking additional education and training beyond high school. As you can see from this slide, Mr. Rush has done a stellar job in establishing pathways to higher education and training. So what happens when you assign a committed JAG specialist like Mr. Rush and provide them the opportunity to teach and coach and provide job skills with the youth? You get the type of results you see on the next slide. These results were from 2023, which represents the JAG graduates of 2022. The same is reflected on the next slide from our 2024 results, which reflects 2023 graduates. Jobs for America's graduates has annual outcome standards to which every program must work toward. Vineland High School, since its start in the program, has met annual standard outcomes five out of eight years. Oftentimes, we don't take time to recognize the accomplishments of teachers who consistently go the extra mile to transform the lives of our students. I appreciate having the opportunity to acknowledge the work of Mr. Bob Rush, your JAG New Jersey specialist, and share with you his accomplishments over the last two program years, and I believe there's a third on the table. You'll see on the next slide that Mr. Rush joined a short list of JAG specialists across the country to be recognized for meeting and exceeding standard outcomes. He was also nominated as a high performer from our state for his outcomes and employer engagement activities and his partnerships. For 2024, Mr. Rush's leadership resulted in meeting and exceeding performance standard outcomes for the class of 2023. Vineland was also among six of our programs that had a 100% graduation rate, and Vineland has ranked fourth among the New Jersey programs for employment, and that rate is 75%. I think that deserves an applause. This is no easy feat to take students from where they are to opening up windows of opportunity so they can secure a promising future. Mr. Rush, you could come up, please. We thank you for your dedication and hard work and your contributions to JAG New Jersey and JAG National. Also, lastly, I'd like to thank the school board, of course, and the administrative team led by Principal Quinn and other JAG champions. One is in the room today, Dr. McCann, and the Vineland community and surrounding areas, and we appreciate your partnership, and we certainly hope that you are pleased with our work thus far. Thank you all so very much. Congratulations, Mr. Rush.
We're going to take another picture. We're going to come down, please.
My student back from ninth grade.
For everybody up on the board, I'd like to say thank you. This is a teamwork effort from VHS. I just want to make note, one very special day is coming up, and I've said this just about every year. Mark on your calendars, April 4th. That is our job fair for this year. So please, if you'd like to attend the job fair, Friday, April 4th will be the VHS Job Fair. Thank you.
For our next presentation, I would like to ask Executive Director Terry Godluskiewicz to provide us with an update on our behavioral support plan.
Good evening, everyone. As everyone knows, since the pandemic, the state has charged school districts in ensuring that we're focusing part of our instructional day and time on student behavior and student support emotional growth. So this is just a very brief overview as to what we're going to, our plan for the 24-25 school year. As you see, my cover on this shows that we have the portrait of a graduate, and I felt that that was important to keep on there because, as every pillar has to do with emotional growth support, it's good to keep that in mind as we approach our students and their emotional needs. Since the pandemic, we have seen a rise in student behavioral needs, and we're really talking about students understanding what the expectations are during a school day, their social skills, their ability to be able to be in a classroom and have the understanding and expectations. So part of our job with central administration has been working with administration in the schools to figure out what their needs are. And over this past year, we have seen an increased need for social and emotional supports in the classrooms, especially at the elementary school level. I don't know when we're going to be able to start saying "because of the pandemic," when we're able to stop saying "because of the pandemic, but we have seen, as many of you know, that increase of social and emotional needs and support, especially with our younger students. We have seen an increase in referrals for behavioral assistance. We have seen an increase across the board at all levels, referrals to our partial care programs, our inpatient hospitalization programs. And we've also seen, as we've tried to be given supports in the least restrictive environment or the general education, we're seeing an increase of students being removed from those programs to be put into a more specific classroom. I have always been very proud of the supports that we have been able to offer our students in Vineland. We are really have always been above the curve, and we've offered supports before supports were even really a task that was given to us by the Department of Education. We, for many years, have had our school-based youth service programs, or our RAF program at Wallace and at the Esselte Building. That is a partnership with Inspira Health. Over the years, we have trained all of our school guidance counselor teams, our social workers, and our child study team members in functional behavior assessments, understanding the whys of behaviors and why students may be experiencing or acting out or responding to different situations in the way that they are. We have brought in applied behavior analysis, or ABA, services into our autism program as a best practice. We have implemented socially-emotional learning classrooms, the SEL classrooms, in our middle school levels, as well as all the programs that many of our elementary schools have, like the character ed programs, the School of Characters, those types of things. We have always given professional development opportunities in socially-emotional learning, a lot of trauma-informed classroom type of workshops, how to address behaviors that are out of the ordinary. Over the past year, two years now, we've brought in restorative practices. We work with the prosecutor's office with the Handle With Care youth tips to know how to deal with children who may have experienced a trauma within their home by the time school ended one day to the time the next school day starts. We have partners with MJ4S, and we've also, if many of you remember, we have received the JED grant for emotional supports and some outreach, though that is in the early stages. And our administrative team, our curriculum team, has been working on our MTSS, our multi-tiered support systems, which also include early interventions for not only the academic needs but also the behavioral needs. So we offer a plethora of things, which I am very proud, but we're still able to offer more, and that's what we're trying to do this upcoming year. At the district level, the way we plan on continuing these supports is not only continuing everything that we just went over, but our partnership with Complete Care to expand the behavioral and mental health needs, which has been part of our MOU, and we're working diligently with Complete Care to try to get that service in place. We have many partnerships with local agencies and clinics that can support our students. We encourage all of our schools to utilize New Jersey Positive Behavior Supports in Schools, or NJPBSIS practices. That is through the Bog Center at Rutgers. As we embark on our parent universities, working with parents on behaviors, expectations, that's a huge piece of what we want to bring in when we start our parent universities. Something that happened last month, which is kind of the mainframe of this, is that the board approved an additional partnership with Genovian Associates, excuse me, to work with our general education population. Right now, they already work with our autism program, but to work with the rest of the students at the elementary level. Working not only with students, but a bigger piece of that is working with building administration and teachers, so they can assess, they can design, they can implement strategies to help their kids within the classroom. They're going to work with our building administration and our staff to train, to coach, and to evaluate evidence-based management plans. Our hope is that working together with this company will improve our educational outcomes as well as address our call to action. We also are very excited because through Mrs. Rodolfo's office, we have received a grant at the middle school and high school level to add an additional mental health counselor at each of those levels. So again, we are continuing to move forward. We look at this and we understand the needs of our students, and, you know, this is something that I am passionate about. I know that it's a need in our district, and I'm thankful that Mr. Yano and our team sees the need for this as well. You know, I always like to add things in a final thought and just kind of cutesy, that's my teaching background, but just, you know, all behavior is a form of communication, and it's up to us as educators to figure out what the children are trying to say. It could be, "I don't like math." Sorry, Jeffrey. Or it could be something bigger, like something is happening at home, but it's up to us to figure out. And through this plan and through the tools that we have offered and that we're bringing in this year, our hope is that we can figure out what our kids need and what they're trying to say. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Have a great evening. Thanks.
There is no hip report. Approval of minutes, August 7th, 2024 combined meeting; August 21st, 2024 additional combined meeting. Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yep.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes, on October, I'm sorry, August 7th and abstain on August 21st.
Thank you. Mr. Silva?
Yes, on August 7th, abstain on August 21st.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Godisbadi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Committee reports. Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes, good evening. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, September 3rd via Google Meet at 8:00 a.m. In attendance was Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Yano, Ms. Carey, Mr. Silva, Mr. Rivera, and myself. Following topics were discussed. The RFP for the Vineland High School HVAC heat pump project was won by Fallaskan Mechanical. RFP for middle school reading math intervention program opens September 18th. The following unbudgeted HVAC issues and the associated estimated costs for Rossi, Landis, Johnstone, Petway, and Cunningham. VHS North HVAC repairs, RFP came in at 1.8 million. Barcy Parking Lot, Landis structural repair, and Cunningham structural repair. Following personnel items, NJ Youth Core Warehouse Supervisor Retirement, Diesel Mechanic Retirement. And lastly, we purchased six 54-passenger buses on GOV deals totaling $339,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Good evening. The Discipline Committee met on Thursday, August 8th at 5:30 p.m. here at the Landis Building. In attendance were Mr. Bono, Mr. Medio, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Yano, a group of elementary and secondary principals and assistant principals, representatives of the VEA, and myself. This meeting was a continuation of a series of meetings being held with school administrators. Topics discussed included changes to the code of conduct, challenges facing elementary schools that were not present in the past, the effect of trauma and mental health at the younger grade levels, distractions at all grade levels. Also discussed were resources to help with some of these challenges, including GoGuardian software, which is currently implemented in some schools but possibly looking to expand it to more schools in the district. The software tracks internet activity on students' computers, placing behavioral consultants at all K through five schools to help with the challenges that face our kids today that may lead to discipline issues, and finally, and taking what is working at individual schools and implementing them district-wide.
Mr. Holmes?
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on August 26th, 4:30 p.m. In attendance were Superintendent Yano, Mrs. DiMarci, Mr. Sabrana, Mr. Bono, and myself. We discussed the back-to-sky extravaganza, professional development updates, service learning at Vineland High School, curriculum and department updates, English Language Arts High School Intervention Course, the Danielson 2022 Evaluation Rubric for the 25-26 school year. Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, September 3rd at 5:00 p.m. Present were Mr. Superintendent Yano, Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Bermudez, Mr. Bono, Ms. Mason, and myself. Driver recap: 143 drivers budgeted, 135 drivers needed, 134 filled positions, five drivers are on leave, 17 subs, and three drivers in training. We had 195 open registrations, 141 completed in August. We have established a new procedure that requires certain documents before the parent is allowed to submit. This saves our team time in chasing documentation. The joint ensures there are 13 co-ops. Summer 2024-25 route packages are complete and have been picked by the drivers. 24-25 driver vacations have been completed. All but three drivers have completed the state mandated training. Welcome back meeting was held with the drivers on the 3rd. We updated the website to include additional information regarding the registration process. Back-to-sky extravaganza, transportation and a tent set up to help parents with any questions they may have had with registration and bus passes amongst other things. We had two buses on display and explained bus safety and procedure. As far as vehicles, we received one new bus. It is being prepared to be infused in the fleet with cameras and tablets. Like the Finance Committee, we discussed the purchase of six buses for $339,000 from GOV deals. Also on GOV deals, two buses, one pickup garage, one Durango for supervisors, and the tow truck. We reorganized the bus lot. Consolidation of buses to the main bus lot has been completed, and the lot has been renumbered. Trains Finder, we are mandating the drivers to use tablets for pre- and post-check as well as Student Finder and Z-Pass. The struggle is getting the students to bring their badges to swipe on a daily basis. Thank you.
Any further reports? Public meeting report by the board solicitor.
Good evening, everybody. Nothing on the legal front. Just wanted to wish everybody a safe and successful upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we have a student representative here tonight. Public comment on agenda items only. Limit your comments to three minutes. State your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Dumeo Cooper? James Cooper, excuse me. I apologize, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening. My name is James Cooper. I'm the founder of a mentorship program called Out of Bounds and Mentor in the Green. And over the summer, we had a seven-week program, which is a golf program mixed with mentorship, and the kids was ranging from ages nine to 17 from 15 different cities, with 80% being here from Cumberland County. I know we have a big task on our hands this year as far as dealing with the different things that's going on in the schools, and we have a whole lot of good programs here. What I wanted to do was find out, how can we actually honor the kids that's participating in Vineland public schools that's actually in our program? I wanted to know what would I have to do as far as getting them to come here to receive a certificate.
Mr. Bermudez will reach out to you, and we can coordinate an event to honor those students. So, Mr. Bermudez?
Thank you very much.
Mr. James, if you could leave us your contact information as well? Dr. Thomas McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mustarel. Good evening, Vineland Board of Education. My name is Thomas McCann, 1013 Holmes Avenue, Vineland, New Jersey, and I'm here on behalf of the Vineland High School Historical Committee. We want to thank the board members that are helping us get the national landmark sign out in front of Landis School, and led by Mr. Medio. We certainly appreciate everybody recognizing the outstanding achievement that our school and school district and city accomplished and earned by getting our building registered as a national historic treasure. We were the first structure in the City of Vineland to get that. There is now two other sites and structures that have the same designation, but we are a national landmark, and we're very, very proud of that, and we're very proud of the accomplishments that our students and staff, the members of the committee, did back in 19, early 1990s. Ironically, as the committee's gone through the binders, we have many binders on the work that went into getting this on the map for historic structure, we received thousands upon thousands upon thousands of dollars to get this place to look like it does and get the sign out in front. After we got done, we got some bragging rights. We're very happy about that. As a city, our community loved it. Governor Whitman was so impressed that she sat on that stage pounding her chest for having a school in this state on the national register, and she was so impressed that she came down here with a bus full of her delegates and colleagues to recognize that. Up on the stage also was Senator Esselte and Assemblyman Jack Gibson and many other dignitaries. So as we're going through our stuff, we had many things we had to do on this building to make it qualified. Ironically, Mr. Medio- Ironically, Mr. Medio had all the bricks. He got the board, led the board, to point all the bricks on this building because that was one of the things that was holding us up, getting the designation. And he led the board to fund that, and then the state gave us matching funds for that. Again, thousands and thousands of dollars went into the sign that's out in front, on the front campus there is built. Larry Moriggi, architect, was very helpful with all the work that we did here. So, we want to thank the board members that followed Mr. Medio's lead in getting our sign back out where it was belonged. Many years ago, it was taken down, and misinformation was given out that the sign was broken. The sign was never broken. I talked to Mr. Weaver, the former superintendent of maintenance here, and others, and the committee found that it wasn't broken.
Mr. McCann, Dr. McCann, I have to ask you to wrap it up a little.
I'm wrapping, that's it. We'll wrap it up. Here's a ribbon. But thank you for your support. We really appreciate it, and continue good luck for the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Superintendent?
I have no other sheets. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Seeing none.
Superintendent's recommendations?
Yes, thank you. Requesting discussion and approval regarding Personnel Items 1.1, as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Scottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. Greenfield.
Please come on up. Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the members of the Vineland Board of Education and Mr. Yano. I'm deeply honored and grateful for the opportunity to serve as the vice principal, can't believe I'm saying that, of Sergeant Dominic Pillar Middle School. I'm excited to collaborate with the dedicated staff, students, and families of our school community. My heartfelt appreciation goes out to my family, my friends, my colleagues, my administrators that have always supported me on my career journey, and of course, to my daughter, Ms. Natalie. I love you, and you inspire me to be better every day, my babe. I can't wait to get started, so thank you so much.
We are very excited to have you onboard and looking forward to doing great things together, so thank you. Requesting discussion and approval regarding Procedures and Operations Items 2.1 through 2.3, as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments?
I just have one question on Policy 2200. Paragraph, let's see. Paragraph 3, the first sentence, where the removal of approved annually by the board. Just wanted to know why we're removing the approval, removal of the approval from the board for that curriculum content. That's all.
As this is the first reading, when we come back to Policy and Personnel, we'll look at that specific line, trying to find it on the doc, and it's the strike through. These policy alerts come directly from Strauss Esme, which is our policy review company, and they provide us with the language that complies with the law. So, something must have changed that requires us to remove that line. I don't have it in front of me, the board brief that we shared at Policy and Personnel, so we'll go back, and this is the first reading. So, at the next Policy and Personnel meeting, we'll unpack that a little further so that the board members are aware of why that was, there's a strike through on that line.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Yano, if I might add, there's also no legal requirement to perform the review annually. It's actually supposed to be on a multi-year basis, which typically ranges from three to five years. Obviously, I'm not privy of the exact communications that took place during committee, but in terms of the legal perspective, it doesn't have to be annual, and it could be up to the board's discretion whether it be annual, every two years, three years, as long as it's on that multi-year timeline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Scottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Finance Items 4.1 through 4.10, as noted on our agenda.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
I'm going to abstain on 4.5 and 4.6. Yes to the remaining items.
Mr. Medio? Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, so I'll abstain on 4.5, 4.6.
Thank you. Mrs. Scottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no regular agenda. Proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. Approval of the following amended name of the Vineland High School South Building. First Lieutenant Charles Chicky Asselta. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Scottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Approval of itemized bill pay list for July 2024. Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Scottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no emergent items. Old business? New business? Board member superintendent remarks. I'll start with Mr. Fiocchi.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Medio?
Congratulations, Ms. Greenfield. I hope you do a good job for us. Thank you.
Mr. Bono?
Sorry. I speak loud enough, sorry. And Central Administration and the Board of Education have been working very hard all summer long for this district. I'm personally excited and happy for all the new hires and transfers and everything that we've worked very hard for this new 2024-25 school year. Being a first-year board member, I have been taking a lot of information in on how our district works. I've listened to positive and negative experiences. There is one thing that I can assure you is that 99.9% of the people in this administration building that sit on this board of education with me, we all have one thing in common. We have the best interest in our hearts and our minds for the students of Vineland, all staff members and the schools within this learning community. I've sat in committee meetings for transportation, facilities, discipline, and curriculum, and every discussion is for the betterment and positive change for Vineland Public Schools. Very proud of that, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So, thank you to everyone involved. We have the tools needed to produce successful, educated students within our district. I'd like to wish all of our sports teams, clubs, a healthy, fun, and successful season. A special shout-out to Vineland High School Football and Girls Tennis, as two of my pride and joy, Laina Robbie are student athletes on the team, so good luck to those teams. Lastly, I would like to wish our flagship school, in my opinion, VHS South and North Campus, the best. Please, every staff member, do your best to committing the discipline and curriculum that are in place to have a healthy learning environment for all students. Our students deserve it. We, the board, are committed to working with Central Administration in selecting a principal for the school year sooner than later. VHS South needs a leader that its students and staff will get behind, support, and strive for excellence. Special thanks to Debbie Quinn, who is the fill-in principal for the upcoming year. And we are confident that your leadership will provide our school with what it needs until we find somebody to fill in every place and learn from you. Then you can go back to your retirement and enjoy it. So, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. Every, beginning of every school year brings a lot of excitement, a lot of joy, well, not for the students. Most of the students have joy. But it's also an opportunity to start fresh, brand-new. What happened last year was last year. What happened in that class that you got that D in, don't worry, there's a new year, you can pick that up. Every teacher, fresh start, new set of students. So, it's an exciting time. So, it's an opportunity to change the narrative of your own personal life, change the narrative of our school district, which is the best school district in New Jersey, and just completely start fresh. So, to that, I say all the students, good luck, all the best to you, to every student, to every teacher, to every faculty member, to every staff member, to every personnel member, and every single department, and all throughout this school district. We need you. We need you to make, continue making New Jersey, excuse me, Vineland, New Jersey, the best school district in New Jersey. Try to change my mind. I always say that. I also want to speak to the parents. You are part of this. You are a huge part of this. You are our partners. You are important. We need you. A los padres, los necesitamos. Eres una gran parte de esto. Eres necesario. Eres necesario para poder trabajar, para mejorar sus estudiantes, sus hijos. They're a huge part of it. And I'll say this, I haven't said this in a while. Parents ask lots of questions. It is your right to do so. Padres, pregunten muchas preguntas. Es su derecho y deben hacerlo. And with that, thank you, and have a good evening.
Mr. Sabrina?
Mrs. Greenfield, congratulations. I couldn't be any happier than to see you get this post. As anyone who knows me knows, this is one of my major goals, is to make sure that we grow and encourage our workforce. Because not only, you're going to be a rock star at Pillar, you represent to other staff members not only the hope, but the promise of being able to move up and become a leader in the district. And whenever possible, this is what we need to do. Not to the exclusion of other candidates if they be outside the district, but always looking at our own with the most interest and support. So, good luck to you. I know you're going to do a great job. And to the rest of our staff members, and to our students and parents, these 29 years are just kind of blown right by. 20 as an employee, and now my ninth as a board member. And I know that feeling of excitement you always get just before school starts, and even though I'm not working now, I can feel it. I just hope that we have a safe and successful opening of school tomorrow and another fantastic year. Thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, Ms. Greenfield, congratulations. Looking forward to working with you. Wish you nothing but the best in the school. It's a great school. My kids went there, so I know you'll do great. You have some great teachers, great support staff, so I know you do nothing but the best over there. I'd like to wish all of our students, all of our parents, all of our administrators, support staff, and everyone else involved a happy school year and successful school year. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, congratulations to Ms. Greenfield. Looking forward to the work that you'll do in your new role. We're back to school tomorrow, and I want to thank our Central Administration team and Building Administration for their hard work this summer. I also want to shout out the Transportation and Registration Departments for working tirelessly to address the needs of our students and families over the summer. Parents and guardians, please keep in mind that our staff is fielding hundreds of calls a day. We'll have the normal hiccups for the first few weeks of school, but everyone, please be patient. We're glad and happy with the work that has been done. If you do not know about the new schedule, please check the website for those. Board members, if you receive calls or emails, please forward those calls to Mr. Yano and his staff so they can address them accordingly. I'm looking forward to a great school year. There's a lot of great things happening in Vineland Public Schools. Thank you, Ms. Godlewski, for your presentation this evening that was well-thought-out and relevant to addressing our students' needs. I say relevant because sometimes a lot of our so-called solutions don't really address students' needs. So, thank you for that. Let's commit ourselves to being a part of the solution this school year. Thanks, and have a great year.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Just a special shout-out to our entire team who put together an extraordinary extravaganza. We had over 1,200 registered participants, 150 student volunteers and athletes. All of our schools represented, over 40 community partners. It was an incredible day. Looking forward to planning next year's event, and it was just super exciting. Last week, we held our new teacher orientation and non-tenure teachers academy, also another huge success. Thank you to our curriculum team, our special ed team, our HR team for, you know, hiring as quickly as teachers are coming in and filling these positions on a continual basis because we had quite an awesome group coming in, over 63 new teachers at our new teacher orientation. Yesterday, we officially welcomed back our staff members. They spent the last two days working on professional development, setting up classrooms and making connections with their new leaders as we are approving new principals, a new principal of Pillar, Mr. Pierce at Johnstone, and just bringing in a couple other support staff members as well. Just another reminder, Mr. Holmes kind of spoke about this already, you know, tomorrow is our first day, you know, buses will arrive. They may be a little bit late, but please be patient with us. Students are asked to be at their bus stop 10 minutes prior to the noted time on the bus pass. Parents, please check parent portal for bus updates as updates are being made daily. I want to shout out to a couple of our local community partners. True North Church donated 400 book bags with school supplies for our students. Thank you, True North. Fusion Church, they donated 400 staff care bags, which will be distributed this week, tissues, hand sanitizers, and candy. Everyone loves some candy. And also, AMI on Chestnut Avenue donated 25 book bags with school supplies. So, thank you. All of the supplies and donations will be carefully distributed because we have students and staff members who appreciate receiving those items. And finally, you know, our Central Administration team, on behalf of the group, I want to wish all of our students and staff a wonderful, exciting school year. Let's make it a year full of growth, learning, and success, and partnership, because without partnering, we will not be able to move this district forward. So, it's working together from the Board of Ed, Administration, teachers, parents, community, and our kids will be able to achieve amazing outcomes. Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate Ms. Greenfield. I think it's a long time coming, and we're excited, and I know you're excited, and the school's excited, all of the new hires. I'm a little disappointed at one of our retirees, Mr. Eubanks from the Junior ROTC. He's going to be sorely missed when he does leave. Mr. Cooper, thank you for coming and pointing this out to the board. I have followed you, followed the Mentor on the Green on Facebook, so I'm excited to be able to, you know, give our kids a little bit of recognition that-
so I'm excited to be able to, you know, give our kids a little bit of recognition that they deserve and they need also. So, thank you for coming tonight, and make sure that, you know, I'm sure they'll get in touch with you soon so that we can do that. I want to echo a lot of my fellow board members' comments from our, all of our staff, our teachers, our secretaries, our bus drivers, our maintenance. I don't want to leave anybody out, so I'm going to say the entire district. Our central team has been working very hard. I want to thank our board members for working together, also with Central Administration and the whole district. We are a team. We need to partner together, and I see that's what we're doing. With that being said, good luck in the new school year, and we're excited to see where this is going. Good luck to our sports teams. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?